Check one two, one two. Check one two, one two, check one two, three, four. Check one two, three, four. Testing one, two, three. Test, testing one, two, three. Testing one, two. Check one two, check one two. Check one two, check one two. Check one two, check one two. Check one two. Check one two. Check one two, check one two. Testing one, two, three, test, test. Check one two. Check one two. Check one two. Check one two. Check, check one two. Check one two, three, four. One, two, three, four.
Check one two.
Good morning to this lively crowd and everyone at home. I would like to call this meeting to order for the July sixteenth Board of Education meeting.
Mr. Baden.
Present.
Mrs. Hapke Meyer.
Here.
Ms. McKnight.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Stamm.
I'm here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moves on to item number two on our agenda, as proven signed, the Board of Education minutes from last month. Any questions, concerns, comments from the board? If not, it need a motion to approve the minutes.
I will move.
Mike moves, do I have a second? Shelley seconds, Carrie when you are ready.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Mrs. Hapke Meyer.
Yes.
Ms. McKnight.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Stamm.
Yes.
Moves us to, do we need to do the item B for the public meeting?
Uh, yes, but it doesn't look like you have any input, which is good.
Perfect, so we can move past that, which would then move to item number three, some treasure report.
All right. Um, after last month, I have a relatively short, uh, agenda. It's asked that the board approve the monthly financials for June and then approve the one donation we have listed, um, from Neil Raymond to the high school band. I do have a couple other things, um, with the end of the fiscal year.
School year, I just wanted to do a little, um, presentation on where we ended at the end of the year and how things look, so.
Nikki's gonna bring up a, a real simple visual for you guys just to look at, but basically I just wanted to share, um, obviously June thirtieth is, is the end of our fiscal year and we did end the year with two point two million dollars, which is up over two hundred thousand from last year, so we're moving in the right direction. And basically I was gonna talk about our revenues, Nikki, is that coming up?
That, um, Mr.?
Oh, you have it. Sorry.
When did you send it, Nikki?
Um, Carrie sent it yesterday. Did you send it to your computer?
I didn't, I sent it to you. Sorry. That's my fault.
A little elevator music?
Yeah.
I'm sure Mike can hum us something.
I could sing.
There you go, yeah, absolutely.
Not for long.
It's not on the screen yet.
Yeah, she's gonna have to take the screen over.
Um, actually I just ordered it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, I was gonna say I can see it up there, but.
Perfect.
So this is, it's really, you're waiting, but it's super, super simple. It does nothing big and fancy here, but.
Perfect.
Um, basically what I did is I showed our revenues just in a pie chart in the expenditures that I do each year for different reports, but I, I put them on the same page so you can see the comparison to how we did from last year to this year. So, uh, there you can see, it's nice and tiny too, sorry. That shows, um, like I said, fiscal year twenty four up top, fiscal year twenty five underneath on our revenues. Nothing real big here other than, um, our state aid was up. Our state aid was up a little bit, um, because if you remember in the last biennial budget, we did see a couple hundred thousand each year, so that was up. The other thing that increased this was the science of readings reimbursement stipend that we got. Originally when this came about, um, we were going to pay it out to the staff and then we would be reimbursed. And I was going to, I set up an account thinking we could post it to one account and then when it came in, I would post it as the, the revenue as a reduction of an expenditure, so it zeroed the account out to make sure we were whole and everything. Well, the state didn't want it that way, they wanted it posted to a special revenue account. So that include, that was two hundred and thirty nine thousand there. Um, but obviously when you're locally funded, uh, seventy two percent of our revenue comes from real estate taxes. We did have a bump there this past year compared to fiscal year twenty four. And basically, um, when the levy failed in November, that's when we reached the twenty mil floor. So we did see a half of years worth of collection, um, of new real estate money from falling to the floor. And then, which is twenty mils. And then, um, we did receive an excess payment of about a million. So between that, we saw an increase of about two point nine million. Um, and then this year, you know, we will continue to see that increase, but we'll receive a full year of collection, as I know now. Um, but of that thirty five point six million dollars on the bottom, um, thirty one point five million is real estate and then four point two million is public utility. So that, but it's combined for a form of local taxes. On the expenditure side, um, this is the same thing, uh, just showing so you could see the comparison. You can see as we continue to reduce our supply budget, we're doing that, uh, compared to last year, we were down. Um, of course, there's always something else that we have to spend it on, so, um, I feel like I always say that our purchase service line is the line that I feel like we have the most change in throughout the year. Um, a lot of this is due to when we have to approve, um, contracts with other districts or, um.
The ESC.
ESC, whatever, for, you know, some of our special needs students. So that's always a number, I look at that number and over the past like five years, you know, it reduced for a while because they changed the way that they were funding students, like all the community money or community schools money came through us and then it was deducted from us. Well, now it just goes directly to that school, so it looked like we were saving money and now all of a sudden that number's creeping up on us, but it seems like that's just the way it goes. It's, it's not a, it's not a bad thing, I don't mean to sound like it's a bad thing, but it definitely is, it is a number that's always on the move. And then our salaries ended the year a little higher than I hadn't anticipated. Um, the science of reading, two hundred and thirty nine thousand that paid played into that. And then sub costs were up, uh, we had a couple contract payoffs due to people leaving the district. And then, um, all of our Esser's staff, the ones, our September, our Esser funds ended on September thirtieth of twenty twenty four. So the July and August and September were still paid out of our remaining Esser funds. So bringing that all back on, that, that, that was a lot of activity, so, um. And then the benefits, uh, I will say, if you look at our benefits, we have minimal increase there and that is due to the fact that the district saw four years with zero percent increase, increases in our health insurance. And then, um, the employees have paid an additional one percent each year and that's all employees across the board of the premium. So between that, now we're not gonna be as lucky this year, we are seeing a fifteen percent increase in our health insurance, but we do have a couple high dollar claims that are driving that, but that's just, you know, that's just how it goes. So we have great insurance, you know, and at least we know our employees are well taken care of, so. But at the end of the day, we, we did have cash and I put this up here just because, um, this shows you our cash for each year and I just went back to nineteen and through the current fiscal year twenty twenty five. Um, in, in twenty twenty was the year that COVID came about in the spring of twenty twenty. But that was the year that Nexus made a two point one million dollar payment before they decided quit paying and then they paid, you know, nine hundred thousand the next year. So that was a big part of twenty, but those other years that you see that five million dollars, that was where we benefited from Esser funds. That is where I took thirteen on staff individuals and we had the six tutors that we took. That is where I took 13 on-staff individuals and we had the six tutors that we took classroom teachers, experienced classroom teachers out of the classroom for the tutoring program and our six nurses and then we had to have a COVID liaison, uh, which was Lori Williams at the time. All those positions were paid out of, um, the ESER funds versus general fund. We also hired six more new teachers to come in and replace those teachers in the classroom. So you can see that that benefited us, but as soon as those dollars were gone in '23, you know, phasing out in '23, we are right back to where we probably would have been earlier had we not had that money. We used the funds the way we could, we were able to, what they call supplant. Normally, if you have a teacher that you pay out of a federal fund, um, you, you can supplement, but you can't supplant. And in this case, ESER, federal dollars, they're same as IDEAAs, federal dollars, but they did come from a different fund, so you were allowed to do that. So that's how we used our funds and obviously that was helpful. But at the end of the day, our revenues exceeded our expenditures, so that's what you want, just like home. You always want your checkbook at the end of the month to, you know, have more revenue than expenditures. So just wanted to share that briefly though, um, and let's hope that we're moving in the right direction, uh, as we move into this fiscal year, which I'll highlight quickly on the, um, the biennium budget. So the House is meeting on July 31st and the Ohio Senate is meeting on July 22nd to address the veto overrides. Uh, there was a lot on the table that they were looking at. I think you remember me talking about the cash balance, which I kinda wish that was still on the table, but instead they, they're going to all property tax because they're trying to push for a, a tax reform. So the items that are still on the table for the veto overrides are item 55, which gives the, um, budget commission, your local budget commission, the authority to reduce your collect, tax collections. The tax collections are levies that have been passed with voter approval for the school to receive this revenue, but now they are going to possibly have the right to say, if you have more than 30% cash of your expenditures, they have the right, they may, they can reduce that. So they'll have that authority. So it's kinda taken away, um, the school's ability or the community to say, yeah, you know, we'll, we'll pass this levy for you so you can have this money when they can turn around and say, well, you don't need it 'cause, you know, your cash balance exceeds 30%. So that's a big one. They think that one's gonna go. Then item 66, um, is including emergency substitute levies, um, into the 20 mil floor calculation. So when the levy failed and we saw reappraisal in the district, um, we dropped to 17 and a half mils. So they, by law, they bring us back up to 20 mils. Well, we do have an emergency levy that was passed in 2003. That was originally for 4.85 mils and is now collecting at 1.77 mils. Generates $3 million. It always has, it always will. Well, maybe. So they are proposing that that be included in the 20 mil floor. So since we're already at the floor, now it just adds on. So now we will be at 21.77 mils if this passes. So basically they're trying to cap the growth when you're at the 20 mil floor. You know, at that rate in this district with our values, that probably won't take long before we would fall back to the 20 mil floor. Um, don't know if that'll go or not. The other thing is, is item 66 eliminates the ability to basically pass a property tax levy. So the Attorney General has endorsed a petition that is being circulated for signatures to try and be on the November ballot, so they can basically abolish property taxes and school districts will only be able to pass income tax levies. And you know, we've, we've tried that before here. We tried an earned income tax and a prop, or a, and an income tax and neither was well received at all. So, um, you know, that has not settled well with me. Um, you know, it's just, I feel like the whole year's been a little rough, you know? It's like, I just feel like, why can't we get ahead? I mean, we do so well with everything, so. So, but we'll see what happens on the 21st and 22nd, whether they do it or not, but they can't change. Like, these aren't modifiable, so they can't sit there and negotiate, well, we'll increase this, we'll do this, we'll remove that. So basically it's as is or it's not, so we'll see. Um, and then the last thing I just wanted to share that I'm working on the, um, rating presentation we have to go through on August 5th, we will have a call and this is for the refunding from part of our 2017, uh, bonds that were issued. So we passed a levy for 44 million in November 2016 for a bond levy and, um, we're just refunding that. So it's just, like when you refinance your house, you know, you get a better interest rate, so you save money. The money just reduces the amount that we will pay. It's a savings to, um, the taxpayers because it's strictly just to pay off those bonds, so. Um, but I wanted to share that the official statement's done and we won't know the exact amount that we're going to be able, 'cause there's a little formula of our, um, debt level. So it just depends on the rate, but right now we're around 8.7 million that we're looking at refunding and we're saving 4.94% or our savings would be. And it's just kinda like a rule of thumb, anything over 3% is worth it, so we'll be doing that. So I will share that when that's done. Um, I just got done with the official statement, so, um, now I'm moving on to the, um, rating presentation. So we do have to go through that. Don't expect a downgrade like we got last time. Um, obviously our cash balance is gonna hurt us, always does, but at least, um, we're not deficit spending and it is higher than it was last year, so that's all I have.
Carrie, on terms of the cap, where would we stand? What's our percentage?
For cash balance?
Yeah.
Oh, that's not an issue for us.
We're close.
We are at, um, this year we are at, as of June 30th, we were at 4.6%.
Okay.
So that's not even, but they took that part out as far as what you, your cash balance can be on June 30th, but they're still giving the authority or considering giving the authority to the budget commission to make that decision. So what happened, or what's happening all around the state, and I wish we were one of those districts, but districts were creating an 070 capital improvement fund and a 035, which is a severance payment fund, that they put money in to fund people's severance when they retire, which I would love to do because that causes such an influx in our budget. And then, luckily, we have a PI, but it would be nice if we had money, extra money that we could, you know, keep and put in separate funds, uh, specifically for those type of expenses, but we do not. So we are at 4.6% and we are one of, uh, 16 districts that are under 10% in the state, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, so we, our income raised by 2.9 million, uh, last year, right?
Our revenue.
Our revenue.
Increase.
And.
Our real estate.
And that was mostly from, um, from the last half of the year?
That was from, well, it was from Nexus.
Nexus and.
And, um.
The income.
The difference in the 20 mil floor calculation.
Yeah.
We saw the growth.
Are you expecting, and I know that there's maybe some speculation I'm asking you to do, but are you expecting that to go up to like 5.8?
Our cash balance?
Well, no, the, uh, the revenue.
Oh, the increase?
Yeah.
Um.
So, since it was from half a year?
I'm ex, what I have in the five-year forecast, it's going, I'm only expecting it to increase about another 1.8 million, because we already got half of that in fiscal year '25. We got January to June, basically. So then this year, we'll just get that plus the other half of the year, so probably about another 1.8, 1.9 million dollars to the general fund.
So it won't be, it won't be double that?
No.
Is that because Nexus paid for the full year?
No, Nexus only paid for the half, but they paid, um, they paid some back taxes from what they haven't been paying. They paid 20, well, they received major adjustments, so I haven't seen how this is going to affect our valuation yet, because that was on our books for like 60 million dollars in valuation. They've received like 55, they're down to like 55, 56% of that. So they got all those reductions. So they paid, they made up for 21 or 20 and 21. So like this year in Nexus revenue, we received 2 point, um, 2,165,000 dollars, but next year, or current, excuse me, this year, fiscal year '26, I took a very conservative approach and we're only estimating 1.7 million dollars in each of the next four years in the five-year forecast, only because the auditor's office could not break down how much of that was penalties and interest. Rumor has it that they didn't charge any. I don't know if that's true. Um, it was an issue with the rating, but I'm assuming Nexus isn't going to pay, they're not always gonna have that makeup that they're paying, so I reduce that. So we're being conservative there.
Okay, I think I might have misheard you. What'd you say about the auditor's office? I know I didn't mishear you, but I wanna, I wanna say it again. The auditor can't break down where the money's coming from?
That's correct.
Okay. The Lucas County Auditor can't break down where the money's coming from?
I printed off, there's four parcels that we have with Nexus revenue, so I can print all those off. I can go on Ares and look at the summary. I can go and look at their taxes. You can see everything. Um, you can see how much they adjusted.
Yeah.
The values, but when I ask for a breakdown of the, um, penalties and interest that they paid, that, that's not available.
Okay.
So, and, and I had to ask that for the, um, our official statement because it's recorded differently, but yes, I have been told that they cannot break that down by parcel. I don't know, I think I shared with you before that they said that the settlement agreement, um, is basically, you, you just, it, you can't even read it.
Yeah.
It's just, so I honestly don't know.
I know how frustrated you've been, uh, dealing with the auditor's office and I just wanna, in a meeting, back you up behind and say, it's kind of ridiculous that they can't just give you those numbers, so.
Yeah, I don't know and, you know, maybe it worked out that Nexus just paid, but they paid based on a bill that they got.
Yeah.
So they, every taxpayer, if you don't escrow, you know, you get a bill, you get a tax bill and that's what they paid. So, but there's nowhere on there, you know, on the penalties line, there's nothing there, so.
Okay. Uh, and then one other thing, the, the refinancing of the bond, uh, the school won't receive any additional funding for you guys doing that. We're doing that to give a tax break.
Yes, it all just reduces the amount of our overall debt.
Okay. And it will make the, the amount that the taxpayers are paying for that go down?
Yes, it'll reduce our taxes annually, um, 47,456 dollars. So that's, they will collect that much annually for the life of that.
Yeah, well, the taxpayers, thank you for, for going through that, so.
And just so you know, that 44 million was when we did, um, the permanent improvement projects to all the buildings and built White House, um, and then, uh, did construction in all of the building, in.
Changed all the entrances to the buildings, made them more uniform and created a vestibule in all the buildings, so.
Yes, thank you. That's all I got.
Any other questions, comments, concerns for Carrie? If not, it need a motion to approve.
All motion.
Lindsay Moser, do I have a sec?
I will second.
Mike seconds. When you're ready, Carrie.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hapke-Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stamm?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move to item number four, Superintendent's Educational Reports and Recommendations.
All right. Um, first we'd like to introduce, uh, Neil Raymond. He's going to update us on, as you know, we have a lot of projects going on in the district right now. Um, and before he does, I just wanna thank, uh, his crew for all the work that they're doing to prepare, um, our grounds and facilities for, um, the return of students and staff and so forth. It's been a hot summer and they've been working very hard to make sure that everything's ready to go, so appreciate that.
Okay, if I don't knock the mic over. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, as Mr. Hern said, just to provide a brief update on where we are with a number of our projects, uh, if you recall, we had five permanent improvement projects that we, uh, undertook this summer. Uh, first one was the track replacement, um, Monclova re-roof, substantial re-roof, not the entire roof, but most of it. Um, high school auditorium lighting, uh, Waterville boiler, chiller and pumps and community room, uh, building envelope improvements and then the fallen timbers cooler and freezer, uh, junior high cooler. Um, to start off with the track, contractor unfortunately, um, for whatever reason, started a little late, almost four weeks late, so there was a lot of activity with some smittles and preparing and ordering materials, um, was some of the, the holdup there, but, uh, their first day onsite was June 17th. Um, so since June 17th, um, they've been moving, making good progress. The track is tore out. Um, all the event areas have been, um, removed and they're currently, uh, installing the trench drain that goes around the inside of the track. Hopefully, complete with that by the end of the week, early next week, and then paving will go down as soon as the drains are in. Um, so there's been a lot of prep work for that. Um, so we had a couple things that were some unknown, some issues, um, the track, even though we did core samples of the track and reviewed the existing drawings of what we had from the track, the core samples, we took six amongst the whole track in different areas. Typically, something this size, we'd probably only do two or three, but the engineer's recommendation was to do six. Even with the six, there were still some unforeseen circumstances to where the track thickness was varied in depth from what the core sample showed. So long and short of it, there were some areas they removed more pavement than they had planned to remove, so we're having to add in a little bit more stone to put back versus putting the pavement back in. The track profile is set up for two courses of inch and a half asphalt and then a topping track layer of a half inch. So we need to make up some differences bas, based upon some of the existing conditions. So there are some things we're working through. There probably is a pending change order coming, but we're trying to work with the engineer and the contractor to make sure we, it's really accurate and we have the full understanding of that, so I don't have any specific numbers to present today. Um, the other thing that's come about, um, and I don't think it was, uh, anything known until they started releasing their contracts and getting the materials and their vendors, but there's some cure time concerns with one, the pavement, but the second one being the track surface. Um, we're now being told that the pavement needs to sit for about 21 days before they actually put the track surface on, um, which in parcel doesn't, shouldn't affect playing on the field, playing soccer for the season. The problem's gonna be is waiting the 21 days before we start to put the topping on, which will then also have a cure time of 10 to 15 days. So again, we're not using the track, so I don't feel as, that it's as critical as if that we were in track season and wanting to use it, but we're trying to work through some particulars on how we can get across the track while it's curing to get the athletes and soccer players in there, so.
It was originally to be done by August 1st and it doesn't look like we're going to make that deadline.
Current projection is, um, with the 21 days of, if they, if they get paving next week, 21 days puts us somewhere around August 15th, I believe, and then the track surface will go down and again, another 10 or 15 days. So it's looking like it's probably closer to the end of the month before it's all said and done, but again, we continue to push. The engineers have done a fabulous job of, of helping me explain the urgency and the need that that field needs to be used for soccer this season. So, working through those items. So, working through those items, um, on the track. The Monclova re-roof project, um, again, due to securing materials, you know, they were released, uh, um, for contract and to begin work, um, in early June. Their first day on-site was July first. Um, they had some other things going on and trying to finish the job and get the crews available. So, they have also started late, no fault of any of ours.
They are working weekends, though. I did notice them out there Saturday and Sunday, um, this week.
Yeah. So, part of that and trying to get them to develop a recovery schedule to try and stay on task. They are working long days and are working weekends to try and make that up.
Yes.
Um, since July first, we're fifteen days in now. They have the entire community room, the gym done, and they got a good portion of the northeast corner of the first floor done. Um, you know, some minor detailing, but it's all the, all the old roofs been removed, new insulation, new roofs down, and they got some terminations done. So, they're doing about thirty to fifty square a day is what the crew is trying to get done. Um, we met with them on Monday morning at our, uh, in our weekly progress meeting, and he feels very comfortable with, uh, he's added some more crew too, that he doesn't feel the completion dates in jeopardy, which we had, I think, the middle of August. So, he's still roughly got another month.
And they may have started late, but I do believe that they're working very hard, um, to compensate for that, and they're making nice progress.
Yeah. Um, with that job, we also, um, there was a couple of unforeseen conditions, trying to work through those details, but there were some, um, concerns with where the existing roof deck ended to the relationship to the exterior wall, and because they're building a little knee wall in front of that to flash up and over for the additional insulation, because we, um, we're meeting the new energy code with the roof. So, we may have gone from, say, five inches originally to seven inches to meet those requirements. So, that called for some of the parapet walls to get extended up. So, there's little knee walls. In some conditions, what we found right now was primarily around the, the gymnasium. The deck was away from the wall like three or four inches, so they needed to infill that with something. Nobody knew. I mean, the existing prints didn't show anything like that. So, they put a little bit of, uh, structural metal in there to set their knee walls on. So, that's one unforeseen that we could get, uh, a change order in the future on, but it should be pretty minimal at this point.
Yeah, very minimal increase to the amount.
Yeah. Um, I think that's it, pretty much on Monclova. High school auditorium project, um, we started that about a week ago, um, on-site, and the contractor, Lab Electric, has already convened and has most of the demo done in the auditorium, the theatrical lighting. Um, there is a lead time issue for the house lights currently. So, um, we've gathered our thoughts. We're going to keep the existing house lights in play until the new ones are ready to go in. So, they, we had them not demo that, so we could still use it for opening meetings and whatever else to get us through. But the theatrical lightings are actually received last week, most of those in crates. So, they're going to work through and just adjust the schedule rather than trying to get the house lights done now and early and then focus on theatrical. They can do the theatrical and follow back with the house lights. So, Lab Electric has been, uh, wonderful to work with thus far. They just finished the Maumee auditorium lighting project for them, and, uh, Maumee's, uh, director of operations had nothing but good to say with them. So, they're flowing from one right into the other, and so things have, uh, been going well there. Uh, I think that's what I had for the auditorium lighting. Waterville chiller and boiler, community room improvements. Um, actually have a kickoff meeting, uh, right after this meeting at ten o'clock, uh, to just s- sit down with the project manager and, uh, the train, our client rep, and talk through the particulars of the job. And then we have another, um, bigger meeting with some of the subs scheduled for this Friday, um, kind of as a kickoff. But the, um, contract took a little bit longer. We anticipated to get through a train, but that's all been signed and finalized. So, that's been a little bit of a delay there. The boilers have been ordered, um, waiting to be received. The chiller and ice cube storage smittles are currently in review, should be released this week. Um, that currently has like a twenty-some week lead time. So, those will be, get the heating for this winter in this summer and fall yet, and then the cooling, the chillers and stuff will happen this winter before our next cooling season. So, um, I think everything is on track there. Um, so far, I think working with trains been, uh, good, um, trying to say it. It, I think it's worked out well. They're going to be a single source. I mean, all the subs and vendors, I mean, there's, they're doing, they're responsible for the design, they're responsible for securing the equipment, they're responsible for the, um, the whole project put together. Um, so, um, they will be managing that. Um, moving on to the fallen timbers cooling freezer, we had a meeting last week for their kickoff. Um, some of the smittles are in process, the initial smittles for the coolers and freezers, um, were reviewed, the files are, uh, coming back, working their way back through. Those have about a four-week lead time. So, the, the contractor does anticipate current plan to have the fallen timbers cooler freezer set and operational before the school year, with the hopes of knowing that if that's going to happen and that Megan can use it for all of her food, that we're going to try and get the old cooling freezer demoed out of the junior high before the start of school, just so we can get that dust and all that dirty stuff out of the way and not introduce it with daily food operations. So, if everything works well of the plan, that'll, uh, that'll take shape. Um, so they've, they've made good progress. They started on-site Monday. They've already got part of the dock ripped out and, uh, poured some concrete bollards. So, they are definitely moving along with that. Um, couple small, one small permit issue that came through Lucas County that we'll be addressing with them, but there may be a small little change that we're going to have to have them add some fall protection to the outdoor cooler freezer. Nobody's ever heard of the wadding fall protection on such a small little roof, but there's condensers up there, and they're citing the code saying we need fall protection. So, we, uh, we'll work through that. Talking with our vendors, they've never put railings or anything up there on a small little, like, outdoor cooler that's only eight feet wide. But, we have, we have a plan, and they've accepted our plan. So...
Is there a need for a temporary cooler then, for the start of school, or not?
No. If for some reason they, the other one doesn't go as planned, we aren't, we haven't done anything to the two in junior high, so those can be turned back on and used until the time that we're ready to transfer everything over there and those come out. So, we're not planning to have to bring in any additional refrigerations from anywhere. Um, one project that I, I'm not sure if it was on your radar, operations and, um, had a little bit of part in it, but the high school had a scoreboard improvement project that happened. I think a lot of that came from sponsors and donations. Um, but the scoreboard project did complete last week. Um, we have two new scoreboards up in the main gym that are essentially large TV screens.
Yeah.
And they can be used for pretty much anything. I mean, it'll be scoring like a traditional scoreboard, but it, all the configuration of what it wants to look like is all customizable. But then, as I understand it, timeouts, they can flash sponsors up there and videos. And I mean, it is a fourteen-foot by eight-foot TV screen in the one end and a eight by eight on the other end. And, um, that went off very well. Uh, so that is a completed project. Um, and then I figured I'd just touch on some upcoming, um, projects and things that we've completed over the summer. That's, some of them are completed, some of them are in progress. High school, we had a planned power outage on the nineteenth of June, on Juneteenth. Um, that went very well. I'm still waiting the report from the vendor, but there's been nothing earth-shattering that's come out of them that the normal, just the PM service of the gear is what was needed. And, um, it's good. The junior high, we had, um, on the same day, we've been having some ground fault issues for a year or so. That if we have a ground default, it's tripped the entire, the main breaker and killed power to the building when it should have just tripped a breaker. So, we went through, we did, uh, some adjustments on our ground fault settings of that main gear at the junior high. Um, according to the engineers, they believe that'll solve our problem that we would need of, it was set much lower than it should have been. So, it was tripping the main before it tripped the breaker in the, in the sub panel. So, we hope to have rectified those problems. Um, sixty-four forty-six Texas Street home has been demolished as of yesterday. It's gone. They got, um, some rough grading put in. They're removing the driveway today, and then, um, I will get the landscaper out in the next couple of weeks, barring his schedule to hydroseed that area. And the fence has been moved. Um, I have a survey being done to do a lot combination, so that whole White House school will all be in one lot then. So, I got to file that with the village in Lucas County yet. Um, but otherwise, yes, the house is glad for the start of the school year. Um, some of floors, um, floor cleaning stuff, I mean, most of the floors, uh, we had a couple, um, asbestos-containing floor tile rooms that we had to, uh, remove. Um, just, they were due. They, you know, been watching them, and they've been on their surveillance and stuff, and there was a little bit of cracking happening. So, it, all the, uh, that work was done, supervised, air test balanced, all inspected, complete. So, they're back in now, trying to put those floors back. And some of those rooms, we also have some door thresholds, cross the mixture doors that the tile was coming up. So, we, the floorwork has just started this week. Painting's been ongoing. We're over halfway done, uh, with the painting list for the year, the priority one list. I broke down a priority one and priority two. Priority one being classrooms that were either getting new whiteboards or TVs, that stuff was coming off the walls that we needed to put back, or any health department noted concerns and issues. Priority one list should be wrapped up by this week, and then they were going to move on to the priority two list of items. Um, I'm working through that. Marker boards, whiteboards in the classrooms, again, as I noted, some of those, uh, working with technology. All the boards are down, walls are painted. Most of the new boards are up. There's a few, uh, schools that, uh, had a few more boards than others, that they're still working on that. But then, uh, the TVs will be going up here shortly in preparation for the school year. Um, gym floors were fer- cleaned and refinished this summer. That was completed over our family week, July fourth. Grounds team, again, thank them. A busy summer, been a lot of weeding, mowing, and mulching, um, any chance, you know, working around the weather, hot days, rainy days. But pruning, I saw they were out here this morning taking care of, uh, some trees that were growing up in the evergreens that, uh, were well overdue to be, were due. So, they're getting through some of that other stuff on days they're not mowing. So, um, and many, you know, we're into the inspection season now. I'll conclude that, uh, many inspections, the annual inspections are underway, you know, fire extinguishers, firearms, hood inspections, kitchen, uh, fire door shutters, our sensory swing, it's attachment brackets, um, fire suppression hydrants. Um, there is a list of items that, until you start writing them down, that I didn't realize how many inspections we go through a year that is, you know, can be a significant dollars, and those are just required inspections, and we're not improving anything. We're just inspecting and making sure we're compliant with all our codes and our officials. So, um, we'll start to see probably some more fire department inspections before the start of school. I know White House Fire was in, out in the district last week, and I think did CEO and transportation in one other building. Um, nothing significant that came out of any of those. So, um, but it's pretty much my update. Um, any questions for me?
Uh, with the track not being complete, um, are we worried that the, um, that the usage of that field for soccer is going to damage the track while it's curing?
We're working through what we, protection we have to put on there. Um, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the twenty-one day cure for the asphalt. I mean, they put pavement down, and within an hour, cars are running over it. So, I don't really see that as an issue for twenty-one days. But the cure of the track surface, yes. We, I don't know if, hypothetically, if it's, can be plywood over the track, or if it needs to be almost like a little mini bridge, but, um...
But yes, we will be working to make sure that they are able to play on, on that field.
Yeah. The, uh, the track is quite close to the field, right? So, it'll be interesting to see how we, how we are going to need to protect that, because I think it's pretty easy for the girls to, the guys or girls, to, to run and get onto the, uh, the track.
Yes.
Yeah. And, and we lost a minimal amount of that grass area by putting in the drainage system that was really recommended from the engineer to make sure that we're draining and we're not draining back into the substrate and, and, you know, shortening the lifespan of the track. So, that drain is about a six-inch slot that's right on the inside of the track. So, there's a little bit less grass, but I, we went with the least option and less invasive, I guess. But, yeah, until we talk at a later date down the road about whether or not we, and the next track project that we actually make it bigger and do spend the money for the double switchback, we're kind of are confined with the area we have. So, it's, it's still going to be a tight, you know, a hundred and, I think it's like a hundred and ninety-two or a hundred and ninety-six foot wide space in between a track that may be two hundred feet from inside to inside. So...
Okay. Um, would, can you give us an update on that when you, when you know what you're going to do to protect the track?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are, are they going to help us, like, protect the track, or is that like on us to try to protect it?
I think we're going to need to come up with a more...
Because it's not to sound different to them, but I'm like, it's, it's...
I know, right?
Yeah, we're going to have to...
It wasn't unfault that it was started late. It seems like they should be part of the help to, like, protect it for us, since it's behind schedule. So, have they offered to do that, or?
We are working through that. I don't have, we don't have the solution yet, so we don't real sure what, what that is. But yes, we continue to talk, and we continue to push them and remind them of that date.
Yeah.
We remind them of liquidated damages, so they're all aware of penalties and other stuff that could comply with that. But...
Yeah, and they, and that's been shared...
It's only current pressure to, like, help us, help us cover it, protect it. Yeah.
And then the, um, the athlete's safety, too. Uh, are you guys taking coaches out there and showing them what's going on and making sure that the athletes aren't going to, you know, have slip hazards and things like that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with all that when that, um, time comes.
Okay.
Um, yes. Thank you.
Yep.
And I just want to share, I mean, as Neil went through all these, just as a reminder, these are all permanent improvement projects. We haven't done a lot for the last couple of years, so this is more than we normally do. Um, we had built up about five million dollars in our permanent improvement fund, and at one time, um, we thought we were going to have to borrow some money, which I shared that that would have been the first time in my life I ever borrowed money for my work. Um, but with the exception of the cooler at the junior high, that is a cafeteria, and since they have to start spending down some of their funds, um, that is being paid for through the cafeteria. So, the PI budget is tight. Kevin and, uh, Neil and I met last week, and just so I could explain that we basically had like seventy thousand dollars left to encumber at that time. And until we start getting some tax advances from, uh, the June thirtieth, when people are starting to pay their taxes, um, until we start getting advances on those payments, we won't get the settlement till probably early September, but we were kind of... get the settlement till probably early September, but we were kinda, like, we're hoping he, he's gonna have some change orders, so we're trying to pick and choose, like, okay, what can we do? And, you know, we have a lot of, we have curriculum needs, we've had a lot of tech needs, you know, things that were on schedule, so we still have, still have some things, and it's tight. So when you look at the permanent improvement budget, you'll be like, where'd our money go? But it's encumbered, we haven't started paying, I think we just paid our roofing contract of a nice chunk of about five hundred thousand dollars, but for the most part, we still have over four million in the account, but it's encumbered, so. Just wanted to highlight that, though, again, it's, it's a lot of money, a lot of projects going on, but it's out of PI.
And we are paying very close attention to the items that do come out of PI, to make sure that we're watching all of that at this time. Okay, thank you, Neil.
You're welcome, thank you.
I wanna talk just very quickly and update you a little bit on, as the creation of a foundation. I've shared with you that we wanna kinda work to a different name, possibly than the foundation. We've talked about different things, such as the General's Philanthropy Fund, different things like that, so we're still in the process of doing that. But we are very much in, beginning to work with Jenny Perrin from Shift Consulting. In front of you, you will have a timeline, and that's kind of what we are hoping to accomplish, you know, within the near future, and kind of the plans for the different months of what we'll be doing. The first thing that we are working on is securing the funds from donations in order to help provide the funds needed in order to establish that. We also are working to look at how do, how does a school, you know, work to create a 501(c)(3). But all of that is in the works, and we're really starting to take shape with moving this forward. I will let you know that we, again, are going to work closely on the mission, the focused areas of support. We talked about academics, STEM, career tech, athletics, arts, how will these be used? And then working on the key messaging of, of starting to get it out there. We are working on, in order to establish a fund like this, and to have people to gain interest in it and so forth, there's usually some type of project, so we are looking at maybe like what our first project may be, that people that would kind of have, people would have interest in, in order to be able to support it and want to contribute to it. We're looking at potential donors that would be interested in leaving some type of legacy from their family or from them, in order to be able to, again, build the funds of it. We have to identify board members for, basically, the foundation and those people that would be willing to do that. How we're looking at, beginning at, what you'll see on the timeline, is this fall, we are looking at kinda creating three parlor events. When they say a parlor event, it's smaller events that we would actually go out and ask some people of interest, hey, would you like to come and learn a little bit more about this? And as well as that, it might be people that they know that may have interest in something like this also, just learning. And then from that, we would have, like, some key messages of what we would want to accomplish, the mission of it, and, and so forth. So we're in definitely the stage of creation and developing before we can become truly established, but we are working closely to do that. We are meeting, Dr. Pfefferly and I are meeting with Jenny Perrin twice a month on regular meetings, just to be able to talk about, okay, what is being done, where are we at, and what do we do next? So I would plan on every month, sharing with you information about this and where we are with it. I think we have some strong potential, and I know one of the interests is, what does the district look like down the road? And I believe that with the creation of something like this, and giving people an avenue to contribute to a fund that, for the, that would, that would benefit the school district, you know, because I think we have a lot of alumni and so forth that are very proud of, of the foundation that they were given. And so we are really basically just working on, you know, how do we start developing the message of what it is, what our mission is, what, what we're hoping to accomplish through it, and get everything set and established, you know, we'd have to have bylaws and so forth, that would follow the creation of the 501(c)(3) and so forth. And so we are working at doing all of the groundwork that needs to be done in order to be able to share more and, and accomplish more with, you know, getting it up and going. Questions you may have? We're looking very, very forward to it. I think it's going to be a wonderful thing for the district. If you will notice, I did also include in your pile a contract that is for the work that would be done. And again, we're working to have those funds donated in order to be able to have that partnership with Shift Consulting. And so we are in the process of it, but it would be, once we have received those funds and so forth, which I'm hoping will be very soon, you'll see the contract that would be, that would take place with Jenny Perrin and, and the Shift Consulting. And so we are hopefully gonna have that, to have that approved, you know, at the next, within the next meeting or two as well. So, but I just wanted to give that. So that is where we're at with that.
And you, I feel like you made it clear, but just in case people are watching, 'cause there's no money, the, the, the district isn't having to pay any money, it's being donated to be able to start.
There is a donation, there's a person that I had met with that has agreed to donate the money that it would take in order to have this work done, so that we're able to kind of establish the foundation or philanthropy fund. And no, at this time, it would not be coming from the district. How we would do that is talking to the attorney, we would actually take that money, receive it as a donation, but earmark it for the work that would be done through Shift Consulting.
We would pay it as a contracted service, so.
So. Real quick, the Jenny Kama spoke at the October seventh meeting, so if anyone is interested in hearing more about that, they can go back and watch that video on YouTube.
And, and we really are working at this time on some messaging and so forth. She's very experienced, she's worked with really the majority of the school districts that currently have foundations and so forth. And so, you know, there'll be a lot more information coming. We do encourage people to reach out and ask questions about it, they can contact me. But what we're hoping to do is, when we have those parlor meetings and so forth, to really get some people of high interest and to be able to give some strong, clear messaging of what we, you know, would hope to accomplish and the mission of that, of, you know, the foundation, and then, and also to clarify any questions that some people may have, like, how does it overlap with other organizations within the district or the, you know, support organizations, so. The curriculum committee did meet recently, they talked with Mr. Connor about the standards based grade cards. I've asked him just very quickly, kinda to update you about the standards based grades, cards that impact the primary schools.
Sure, good morning. Very quick update, those of you that have had kids go through the system within the last, we tried to put a date on it, but neither Brad, Mr. Rhodes or myself could remember exactly. I would say fifteen years or so. The primary buildings at that time changed their grade card from kind of the old letter grades that we would all be familiar with to A standards based grade. So essentially, you know, there would be a, a learning standard that the teachers would cover with the students, and then they would receive a standards based grade, it's a numerical grade, that, that basically would show a parent how close to mastery of that standard the students would be. Over the last fifteen years, those standards based grade cards have, have changed, and, we've made some adaptations to them. However, over the course of all of that time, if you've had kids go through, they are long, they are cumbersome. The amount of standards that our teachers cover with students over the course of the school year is pretty vast. So this year, starting in the spring, teams from the primary buildings got together and they met in an attempt to kind of make those grade cards much less cumbersome and much more understandable for parents, okay? So what did that entail? Well, in some key situations, they may have created some standard statements that combined two or three. Or they may have changed some language slightly, so that when you go from kindergarten to first grade to second grade, the language is more consistent, there's more of a crosswalk across the different grade levels. So in, in kind of a very simplistic summary, what they did was shorten the grade card, make it less cumbersome, more understandable for parents, but what we're teaching, how we're teaching it, has not changed at all. So Brad did an excellent job, because he's obviously our, our veteran primary principal in the district, who's kind of been through the entire history of that standards based grade cards, gave Lindsay and Shelley an update. I think it's a, it's a good thing, it's probably a little overdue, but we just wanted to make you aware, if you, if a, if a parent would say or ask you a question about, boy, the standards based grade card seems a lot more condensed and a lot shorter, not changing anything we're doing in those classrooms, just the way we're reporting that progress back to parents, so that it's a little easier for them to read, understand, and follow.
I'm sure they'll welcome it.
I, I'm sure they, they will too. And, and, and again, if, if you ever have a question or something comes up, you know, feel free to ask, but I thought it would just be something that, you know, we wanted to cover briefly with you and mention. And again, I think Brad did a great job of going through the history of the grade card, the changes that they made, rationale behind it, and so everybody's on the same page here. Questions?
Thank you.
You got it.
Okay, and next then I would have Dr. Pfefferly, he'll be joining us up here, starting next month, but as, still in his role as high school principal, he is going to share information about, when we talked about different pathways for graduation and so forth.
Good morning. So I'm gonna go through a series of slides here for a presentation, I'll, I'll be brief. But to give you a quick overview of the graduation requirements, so kind of at the other end, Jim just talked about standards based grading, we get them to the, to the high school, and obviously the goal is to graduate, right? So in my nine years as high school principal, we saw a lot of graduation requirement changes. At one point in time, we were operating freshmen through seniors for grade levels, there were three different graduation requirements going on at the same time. So to highlight, I guess two takeaways I would tell you to walk away from this presentation is the amazing accomplishment of our students and our staff to get students to graduation, and from the spectrum of students who need intervention and help and support to get to graduation, and then the students who thrive, right? And we're trying to extend and push and, and help them achieve their, their goals. And in front of you, I shared a letter that is given with some data to the superintendent each year in June. That is authored by Joe Poole and our counseling team, they put together the data on that graduating class. So that's what you have in front of you in paper. And again, helping our students get across the finish line is, is the main priority. That big takeaway of how we get them there and the amazing accomplishments identified in that data, the number of colleges and universities that admit our students, the amount of scholarships that they've earned, and again, beyond colleges and universities, the number of military enlistments for our students, trades, as well as employment opportunities that our students take advantage of. And so that's one big takeaway. The other is, as I'm gonna show you in these slides here briefly, there's a lot of data tracking that has to be done, trying to make sure our students are meeting all that they're asked to do for these graduation requirements. So with that being said, I'm gonna try and transition here, which I'm not sure. Might be locked, Nikki.
It is.
That'll make this presentation real short.
This is really good, well prepared. This slide is fantastic.
Here we go, magic touch. Thanks, Nikki. So the current graduation requirements, they're for twenty twenty-three plus is how they're labeled. So again, as we went through a series of changes in a brief amount of time prior to twenty twenty-three, everything is moving forward with these twenty twenty-three plus graduation requirements. There are three key components, credits, competency readiness, everything will come back to those three main buckets that students have to, have to fill. The credits, this is pretty traditional, so this is something we all lived, regardless of time period, when you went through high school, there are required courses you have to take, certain number of credits you must accrue in order to meet graduation requirements. That hasn't changed. How many credits, there's some district decision left up to that, at Anthony Wayne, we require twenty-one. These are the courses and credits that students must earn. These are explained, all of these buckets are explained to students in class meetings, counselors talk to students individually, class meetings and in the classroom about all of these buckets. The competency bucket, so here, again, students have to prove that they have a certain level of competency in demonstrating knowledge in various areas. And that can be done through, you can see kind of the O's listed there at the front of those bullets, where military enlistment can be an option to display competency, college readiness, career readiness, competency scores through standardized testing as well as CCP. So I'll let you read through that, and again, we can share this presentation with you and make it available online. And then readiness, that's that third bucket. So students must earn seals, there are state defined seals and then local seals. And each of these seals have specific criteria in order for students to, to demonstrate that they have the readiness seal and that they've earned those seals, okay? So that's a lot of seals. Again, that's a lot of data tracking, because if you take our three hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and fifty students that graduate a year, multiply that by four, and every student has kind of their own pathways that they're pursuing, that's a lot of data to track. And again, I wanna give some kudos to our counseling team at the high school, this is a lot to manage, this is a bear. When it, when it was just, did you pass tests, like the ninth grade proficiencies way back in the day, OGTs, tenth grade proficiencies, park and air tests, and then managing how many courses students took, that was an animal of itself. You introduce these seals and these alternative pathways, it's very positive and student friendly. I'd be the first one to say that, but it is a lot to manage and data track. So again, a shout out to our counseling team. This is just a brief explanation of some of those different types of seals, these are some state seals. And again, in the presentation, we have some live links where you could go to the state website, and it gives you the criteria, I'm not going into that kind of detail here. In addition, this is an example of one seal, Ohio means job seal, this is a state seal. This requires a partnership, this is a collaboration, that students have to get some mentors involved to sign off on, both school and workplace mentors. So again, the, the data tracking, now you're going in, into the field a little bit, outside the school walls, to make sure that students are collecting signatures, they're doing what they need to do to be ready to go into the workplace. That, again, goes into that readiness component. Acquiring seals, most of our students, eighty percent's a good figure in the sense that most of our students are, are attaining their seals through standardized testing, they're passing those tests. Again, our, our staff, all the way down kindergarten all the way through up, our students are prepared to pass the. kindergarten all the way through up, our students are prepared to pass those tests predominantly. Not every student is a test taker, though. We all know that. And so these graduation requirements are friendly to that, that allow our students to find different pathways. If you're not a good test taker, you can still get to graduation in alternative means. And that's a definite pro. So again, there's different opportunities. There's many options for our students to achieve what they need to in order to get that appropriate seal to get them to graduation. Again, these are live links in a presentation that we can share. If you want to look up what by literacy is the community service seal, fine and performing arts, you can click on those. Again, some of those are locally defined: community engagement, fine and performing arts. We set the criteria at Anthony Wayne High School in terms of what that criteria, we have guidelines from ODU, but we can set the criteria as to what that looks like. And it basically comes down to, are the students engaged in those areas? Are they taking the classes that are fine in performing arts? Are they involved in the clubs? Are they attending those clubs? Are they in performances? Are they doing those important things to earn those seals? So how do we communicate this, again, with students? And we do our best to try and then use our website to communicate with parents as well. We have our parent meetings when students, after they have their registration meetings with counselors. This is a checklist that we share with our students in home base, and it's up to them to use it or not use it. We've been trying to transition to them being very responsible for keeping track of where they are as they go through the process. Are you accumulating the credits? Are you taking these courses and the right courses to accumulate the credits? Where are you in readiness and where are you in competency? And so it's a spreadsheet that is something they can fill in and complete. There's human error involved with that, so it's not what we go on. Whatever the student presents is not what we're going on, but it allows them to do something and hopefully takes them ownership in keeping track of these various requirements. The honors diploma, whole nother animal to the graduation requirements. Our counselors discuss this with the students. The data in front of you and that we have is about a third of our students graduate with an honors diploma. And again, that's just students pushing themselves, obviously with parent and staff support, to say, hey, this is an extra that I am going for. In terms of what does it give you, students ask that question a lot. What does an honors diploma get me? It depends. There's a lot of intrinsic value with the honors diploma. The extrinsic value is dependent on what you want to do with your diploma, and does it open a door for you maybe at a college or university that may not otherwise open without the honors diploma. I can't tell you that that is a giant no factor for colleges and universities. It's probably very dependent on that college or university's admissions protocol. If it's there, does it bump you? Maybe, maybe not. That is very dependent on that college and university. Our counselors would have better feedback on whether or not that is something that's going to move the needle for a student as to whether or not they get admitted or not. This is an ODU kind of worksheet snapshot, difficult to read on the screen, but again, I think what I want you to note, it's fairly intensive in terms of what students are asked to do. There's a lot more of performance that is required with regards to the courses that you're taking. You're taking more social studies than the minimum requirements. You're taking an advanced science, more than the minimum requirements. Your performance on Saturn Dyes testing, now going to ACT or SAT is expected to be up and higher. So those are the types of elevated academics that you're expected to show in order to achieve the honors diploma. So again, a lot of criteria there, again, a lot of data tracking and monitoring on the part of our counseling teams. And again, this is a quick snapshot of what that looks like in terms of the add-ons, the additional, the going above and beyond, as you would expect, going from a traditional diploma to an honors diploma. Again, approximately a third of our students are achieving that honors diploma, which, kudos to them. They are pushing themselves, trying to get to that next level. And then again, just some bullet points of what that looks like in terms of some of the requirements of the honors diploma. Are there any questions that you have for me?
I have one question. In terms of the language, I know when I went to high school, that was a requirement, you know, a credit. You had to take a foreign language. It isn't a requirement anymore.
Correct.
Have you seen a steady downcrease with language students?
We have. I would say a lot of students are trying to get to two or three years of foreign language or a world language at the high school, but we have seen a little bit of a drop-off because it's not as required as it used to be to get to that next level at the college or universities. So we have seen some numbers dip a little bit in that area.
Do you still offer fourth-year Spanish or French?
We do, yes. Fourth and fifth year, and at the honors level, and depending on course request, student request, excuse me, we offer CCP credit at that high level. It's just, again, it's dependent on the student interests and needs, but you're correct, because it's not a demand like it used to be at the college and university level, we are seeing a little bit of a fall-off.
Okay. Thank you.
Did public speaking used to be a requirement for graduation, or is that just like, has that always kind of been optional, or do we offer that, public speaking?
Public speaking?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have a specific course on that. We have a speech class, and so they're, obviously, they do a lot of speaking and performing, but it is not a requirement. I don't believe it has been a requirement. It's not something that is, it may have been a locally defined criteria.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that just seems like something that probably should be prioritized, like with screens. I'm like, I would like to see our kids, although I do think the teachers do a great job. I've noticed my girls have to give lots of presentations, so maybe that kind of took the place of public speaking or speech class, but I was just wondering kind of where that stood in the high school.
Managing those fears for high school kids, for sure, right?
It's so important. Yeah.
It is. It is.
It's a good life skill to just be able to stand up and speak if you need to and not say, unlike, so.
No, you know.
You know.
Yes.
Fantastic, sir.
One more question. On the percentages for post-graduation, it looks like we're like at 80% for two- and four-year college. I think, if you remember back, like, it's been, what, nine years for me now? I'm just thinking, we were closer to 90%, weren't we? Is that, that's just kind of slowly trailed?
So 85% is always what I used to live by in the sense of what Anthony Wayne would put out in terms of going to two- or four-year colleges or universities. We're seeing a backslide in that from 85 to maybe 80% like we have here in our data. I think it's easy to get caught into the trap that that's a bad thing, and it's not, right? Depending on where that family value, I guess, is. And what we've really tried to impress upon our students, trickle that into our parents, because that is a very personal, family decision of colleges. As I grew up in our home, it was expected. It wasn't explicitly said that you're doing it, but it was expected, right? We knew the expectation. Where we've really tried to transition, I would say in the past decade, is everything that you're doing as a student, and we know that dips into the family bucket again, so we're careful, but it needs to be with a purpose. So don't go to a two- or four-year college if you don't know why you're going, and if you're just going to start debt and expense for no purpose, then maybe that isn't the right move. So you're seeing maybe a backslide of that 80%, probably appropriately. Maybe students are going, you know, I probably need to go more trade route, or military's the right route, or the gap year. Again, gap year's tricky because it also needs to be with a purpose. So we began a partnership with Junior Achievement. That's a group that's working around the Toledo area with other schools that tries to provide a gap year purpose. So it's not just, I'm taking a gap year, and nobody really knows what that means, but what can you do? It's more career exploration. And so it's a great question, Jeff. I think it's easy to kind of go, you know, you're just going to do this because that's what's expected of you, or that's what Anthony Wayne students do. You're going to go to college. Just make sure it's college with a purpose, and if it's not the right purpose, find that alternative avenue pathway that's more appropriate for you. And so at first, I was like, we don't want to see that number drop, but I've really learned in the position that I was in that, no, that's, if we're getting the right kids into the right places after graduation, that's more important than the number of students going to that two- or four-year.
And I do think that we've shared even, like, when we're talking with the students and so forth, to have your future ready does not mean that we have you ready for college. It means to have you ready for what you choose to do after high school.
Right. Correct.
One of the things that I've noticed in Anthony Wayne, even in the last 10, 15 years, is how businesses come in, trade people come in, and it gives those people an option. So maybe, and I hear all the time, the guy that fixes my rooms, he said, I can hire six guys, but we can't afford to train them. We don't have the time. And I think a lot of kids now are starting to think, college isn't the only option, that we need plumbers, we need electricians, we need the heating and air conditioning people, we need fabricators, we need all these people. So like you say, it's not a bad thing to see that number drop from college, you know, to go to college.
Correct.
We need that, we need it desperately right now.
Correct. Yeah, it's truly about getting the right student into the right pathway because, again, we need two- and four-year graduates at the higher ed level, too. We need those professionals who have those degrees, who are engineers and doctors and teachers and so on and so forth. We need those people and we need that workforce, but we need equally a very skilled labor workforce as well.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then. I did want to share with you just some informational items there. Just some informational items there that you can see that talks about moving the district, you know, some employees around in the district and possibly, you know, changing what they might be receiving from their contracts because they've added, you know, some type of education to themselves and so forth. So that's just under the informational piece. You'll also notice that we have three different workbooks that came in a little higher than what they, we had first approved their fees at. You have to, were required to have you approve any changes like that, so that's the cause for that. When you're talking about in item C, board policy revisions, we had gone over these. We had gone over these, too. We had talked with them in our committee and basically approved them. They were not on the list of approved policies, so I just had to officially add them in order to be able to have them, you know, added to our policy manual. We also have then...
Put on that first. Got to put on that first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I always do that.
All right. I know you do. You get excited.
Get excited. Go ahead.
Any questions for Mr. Herman? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I will move.
Mic moves. Shelley seconds.
Thank you.
And when you're ready, Carrie.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hapkamire?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stamm?
Yes.
All right, now your superintendent.
All right. And the next part of it basically has a lot to do with positions within the district and hiring of employees and so forth. You'll notice that we have a couple resignations. I will share with you that that is, again, to move positions from a bus aide to a bus driver, which we're very thankful for. And Debbie Harrison has decided to retire. She has been a custodian with us for a very long time, and we want to thank her for all of her service. In the employment area, we have individuals, which we've been very, very fortunate this year, to have a pool of applicants for special education aid. We believe we have some high-quality individuals coming in, so we're very appreciative of that. And then again, you'll notice that we're being able to add to our food service, bus driving, so forth. Substitutes, we have one classified substitute and one certified, two certified substitutes. We will continue to build that. I do believe that we're in good shape for the start of the school year with what our list is right now. We will continue to build on that throughout the school year. For volunteers, under D, you'll see that we have a volunteer one that was just hired as an IS in Waterville. She's going to help with the girls' soccer program. And then we have Burton Finch, that he has been a volunteer, he's volunteered with the boys' soccer team for a couple years now. Both of the individuals that we're hiring under are supplementals. Those are both new individuals that are going to be helping one with the boys' basketball program and then also with the girls' lacrosse program. Those head coaches have worked with these individuals and then are, will be utilizing their experiences to assist with the programs. And that is what I have for item A through E in this area.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, the volunteers for the coaching, they have to go through the same...
Absolutely.
The same background checks and...
Yeah, they have to have a pupil activity permit.
Yeah.
And so they do have to, they have background checks. They actually, in order to work with the students, have to go through a series of class online courses and so forth to be able to do that.
And that, that's quite a bit of work to do, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I know that my kid's sports has had some volunteers and definitely appreciate those people doing it.
Yes.
One thing I, one thing I was told is the volunteers don't get a key to the building where an assistant coach would get a key to the building. Is there a reason for that? Is that something that we could work on to making their, them feel a little bit more appreciated as a...
Typically, and I'll just share with you, typically when we have the volunteers, and we do absolutely value them, but they typically would not be working with the students or with the student athletes without having a coach, you know, the hired coach. And so typically, that's one of the reasons, is to try to limit the number of individuals that do have access to the buildings and so forth, and so we know that they're going to be with, you know, another coach that would have that access.
Okay. Now, is, that's not always the case, though, right? There could be some situations that the, that the volunteers are there alone with the students. They're, we deem them safe to be alone.
We absolutely deem them safe. They absolutely have gone through, but we do always encourage, absolutely encourage them to have, you know, that's, it's usually with, basically, when you have practices and so forth, typically you have the whole coaching staff...
Yes.
...working with them. But it would be more likely that a head coach or an assistant coach or a head coach would be, you know, with the athletes more so than just a volunteer coach alone. But yes, there may be a time that they would be, and they have, they're able to be.
They're able to get a, like a building tag that allows them in after school?
I think that's something we can discuss as a board first before making that decision.
Yeah, we may.
I think that would be a board discussion rather than just Kevin saying yes.
Sounds good. I'll send an email out to the board and figure that out. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions, comments? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I'd like to move.
Mic moves. Do I have a second? Shelley seconds. When you're ready.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hapkamire?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stamm?
Yes.
All right. Item number six is board comments. Do we have any board comments today? Go ahead, Shelley.
I want you to look around the room right now and notice who is missing here. And that's Karen Gerhardinger, who is our reporter for the Mommy Mirror. And as you know, with Mike McCarthy passing away, and you said, Kyle, that you had just heard this morning that tomorrow's Mommy Mirror will be the last one produced, and that is a severe blow for our community. Personally, when I've talked to Karen this week, she is very obviously traumatized. Mike McCarthy and Karen both are firm believers in local, responsible journalism, and we have lost that voice. I'm thinking just today, talking about the foundation... I'm thinking just today, talking about the foundation, one of the ways we could get the message out is the mirror. That will no longer be available to us. At this point, we don't know. When we look at what they've given to us in terms of council meetings, our board meetings, all the athletics, artists, student staff, the value to the community, this is, this is a severe blow. Having taught journalism, I get it. I just read in the Toledo Blade last week, the Archibald newspaper, produced for how many years, folded. Losing local newspapers is tragic. So I just wanted the community to be aware that this is a loss, and how are we going to make up for it? I don't know. And I'm hoping that maybe his relatives or someone else will pick up the ball on this and reinstitute it, but for now, to get the message out is, is going to be difficult, and it is a shame. So that's, that's all I wanted to share.
And I will share also, they, the Mirror, Karen, Mike, they've always been strong supporters of the school. They have done an incredible job of, you know, publishing positive things going on. Karen spent a great deal of time in this district, probably more time, you know, than she did anywhere else, and it was, you know, very, very much appreciated. And, and it is, it is an incredible loss to the district. You know, if it does not, if they do not, you know, start it back up in some way, we will have to look at how we are getting information out because I do believe that, you know, the Mirror, you know, always did a great job of covering events and covering what was going on in the school, and we did appreciate them greatly.
She did share with me that there are several online databases and news outlet situations where she can possibly tap into and put that up, but she's still searching for that right now.
All right, any other comments? If not, I'll move to recognition of the visitors, and I believe the three of you all spoke already. Unless you want to speak again, I think we can move past that if you guys are... All right, and then with that, I'll move on to, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I will move.
Perfect, Mike moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lindsay seconds. Carrie, when you're ready.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mrs. Hapke-Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stamm?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Great presentation, gentlemen.
You want to note, there will be action afterwards.
Yes, thank you, Carrie. There will be action taken after this meeting, or after the executive session, but be very brief. Thank you.